Good evening. This is the July 31st, 2019 meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Newcastle. Mr. Secretary?
We'll start with three extensions tonight. The first one is Caravio. Are they here tonight? No, okay. They're looking for an extension of... You haven't asked for time.
They are ready to start.
I'm looking to see if they're asking for a certain amount of time here. No, they just, they ran over and need an extension, but they're ready to go right away?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we extend the time on this application and give them six months to start and one year to finish, even though we know they're ready to go right away.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 The second extension is Tomer. This is one that needs more than six months because of the weather situation that's going to occur if we give a six-month starting period.
Mary Scott will be here.
Do you like to speak to this or shall we just wing it?
Well, I'm, you know, it just, life happened and they didn't get started and so now if we go, you know, when we ran out...
You gotta, you gotta be here if you're talking, otherwise we're gonna, nobody's gonna hear you.
I'm Mary Scott, the architect for the Tomers. We've gotten one extension. Life got in the way and they didn't get to start and so now they'd like another extension. They do intend to do the project, but because six months brings us into the winter to do an outdoor project of stairs and patio, we'd like to ask for one year.
They haven't done anything yet? Have they started any, any construction at all?
They had, we did, the original permit was for a portico, a little roof over the garage and the work in the back. We did the portico and the little roof over the garage. We have a C of O on that.
Oh, okay.
So why don't we do one year to complete?
Well, I mean, I was hoping for one year to start because we can't start doing the outdoor work in six months. You know, if you give, if you give us a six-month extension, it puts us in the winter in order to do a deck and back stair.
When would you like to start?
Like to start next spring.
Early, okay. Such as?
Such as June?
That's summer, that's not spring.
May?
How long does it take to do a deck and a staircase?
Well, it's not so much, it doesn't take that long to do it, it's just when they'll be able to start. So they, they can't start right now, which is why we're asking for the extension.
So you'd like approximately one year to start. How long to be finished?
And then eighteen months to finish, I guess.
I'm sorry.
I mean, or maybe fourteen months to finish.
Okay.
This is just for the deck and stair work?
Yes.
Correct.
I don't want to be hard-nosed with that, that's fine with me.
So I move that we approve the extension, one year to start, fourteen months to complete.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The third extension is Fernbuck. What are they looking for? This was a generator application, there must be problems with this one.
No reason, unless it's just the first extension. I'll move for a six-month extension and six months to start and a year to complete.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Light up stains.
Oh, okay. So noted.
Okay. O'Connor.
Please come forward.
Hi.
Hi.
We would like to, we were here in May to legalize an existing fireplace and patio and stone wall. And that was in existence when we purchased the home in 2014. It requires a rear, a variance per rear setback. At the last hearing, we were asked to have the fireplace or the chimney inspected to see if it, if it complied with, with codes, if it was properly constructed, which we did, and I believe you should have received the report.
We did, yes. Tom, was there anything about the report you wanted to make note of?
I was on site the day of when they came to do the inspection. They did a test fire. We were there for a good 25 minutes. At the same time, the neighbor was holding a garage sale, so the garage was wide open and the neighbor on the other side was home and neither one had anything to say or could even tell that the fire was going.
Was that the complaining neighbor or another neighbor?
The complaining neighbor had the garage sale.
He did, okay. So he didn't have any problems with it?
Mrs. Silverman had a garage sale and with a lot of people on her property.
And during the, the process of the fire being started and, and running, you didn't see any evidence of any excess smoke or debris coming out?
I walked the property on both sides and there was no excess or overwash of smoke going to either neighbor or all neighbors approximately. The smoke was, it burned well and it went vertical and it was dissipating.
Is there anyone in the audience, any of those neighbors who wish to be heard this evening? No. I move that we close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion. I'll make a motion. I move that the Connor application for your rear yard variance of 30 feet to legalize an outdoor fireplace and patio be approved. The applicant has complied with the request of the, or that they have the fireplace tested. It was found to be in good operating condition. It should not have any influence on any of the neighbors. There will be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means. The requested variance is substantial, but the fireplace has been in place since the O'Conners purchased the property. There'll be no adverse impact on the physical environment and the alleged difficulty was not self-created. You don't need anything, Tom, right?
No.
For these reasons, I move we approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I kiss the country club?
Yes, please.
I'm Victor Solari, VKS architects for the Mount Kisco Country Club submission for the dome over two existing tennis courts. Mike Corcione is here for the club tonight, as is the Fratelli's Donato and his father, and grandfather.
Grandfather.
Who are actually the contractors that will be building the dome in case there are any questions and we'd be able to answer those. So you have gotten a submission. I brought a memory stick, which I can hopefully use.
In the back, maybe?
Maybe? I think so.
You do the full package from the first folder, the back.
Okay. Other steering.
Perfect.
Okay. So this is the existing condition of the subject property as, as you know, the club...
Excuse me, can you get the microphone on hold? Otherwise the TV audience are gonna see this.
Sure, thank you. I'm sure they're dying to hear me.
Of course they are.
You'd be surprised how many people understand this.
Right. So the Mount Kisco Country Club property is partially in the town of Newcastle and partially in the village of Mount Kisco. The subject property that we're gonna be talking about tonight is in the town of Newcastle and that's why we're here. And there are five existing tennis courts behind the main clubhouse, which is this structure lightly shaded. The access road to the club is along Taylor Road and an right turn into the club property. The courts that were selected to be covered with a temporary dome structure are these two domes almost directly behind the clubhouse. They're also roughly in the middle of the 27-acre property that contains majority of the facilities besides the golf course itself. There's also a small property over in the southwest portion along Annandale Road that is basically just the swimming pool and the poolhouse, and there's no work proposed in that area. So with these two tennis courts proposed to be covered... Okay, go to the next one.
There you go.
Okay. So now we see the area that we're proposing to enclose with a temporary structure that would go up in the middle of October and be removed six months from that date because it's a temporary structure that needs to come down within 180 days. We are proposing the dome to be 118 by 118 feet square, which covers exactly the existing two courts. And there'd be three, one main entrance on the west side of the structure, which is here, closes to the clubhouse, and there'd be two emergency doors out, one on the south and one on the north side. The whole, the entire area is now covered or is surrounded by a chailing fence that would remain substantially with the bottom part of the fence being changed to be hinged out so the snow removal can be done, you know, when there's a snow event. There would be also some concrete pads on the west side of the new enclosure, which would house all the equipment, that is the generator, the heater, et cetera. And with that, there would be also a underground propane tank that would feed the equipment. The structure itself is, like I said, a square footprint, 118 by 118. You can see the fence in those elevations, elevation drawings going around and the dome structure in the middle, the middle of it being at 39 feet. And one of the reasons we need to discuss it with you is that the maximum building height is 35 feet. You can see in the, in this elevation view, the person standing in front of, or anywhere around the dome, actually the line of sight cuts off almost exactly at 35 feet with the middle third of the structure reaching the 39 feet at the top and then curving back down. So we feel that the impact is minimal because it's not a square structure that actually would have a 39-foot wall, but in reality, only the very top section is, reaches that We prepared some 3D renderings, actually rendered into real photographs to indicate the possible visual impact of the new dome. This is, this view is along the access path from the club's parking lot. So if we were, if we were standing on the south side of the parking lot of the, of the clubhouse, looking at the two domes, the two tennis courts, this is the dome visibility from there.
What's the, the color of the dome?
The proposed color is green. We did it white here in this rendering to really better depict the bulk of the structure because as you will see in the other pictures, it almost disappears in view. If we rendered it in green, you would never really see it. So this is actually the dome from, from the bottom of Annandale and this is, I'm sorry, this is the one from the bottom of Annandale and this is further up the road where actually you start climbing up, back up to, towards the kill house and, and then this, so from here, looking towards the dome, this is what you see. It's almost entirely covered with trees.
What months will it be down?
It'll be down from April till October.
So the green is gone by then also?
Correct. And I expected that. We prepared a, another rendering, which was not submitted because we did not have time to actually make that supplemental, but I would like to show you, if you don't mind, the off-season... So these pictures were taken in late November and you will, and they're basically the same exact locations. This is the highest up on Annandale. Once you go further, you get into these woods and then you don't really see from anywhere towards the dome. And then you can see here in the back is the dome structure rendered in green, which is what is proposed. This picture on the left indicates, is taken from the bottom of the, of the road, which is this angle right here, again, looking up towards the dome. And there's one right close by at the, at the crest of the hill and that is a panoramic, panoramic view, looking basically north towards the dome. But that's well within the property. If you go down towards the road, you will really not see it because it's over the, over the knoll and, and the dome disappears behind the grate.
So you felt the green would be less visible than white?
Well, actually, there are other options. I think the green is less visible. The darker color in winter, I think, kind of tends to blend. Of course, if you have snow, then it stands up, but, stands out, but I think that the darker colors will be more soothing to the eye with the land, better with the landscape. Of course, the color of the landscape changes throughout the year, but even if you put it up in late October, you still have leaves on the trees and then they change colors. Then it goes down to basically bare trees, which is what we experience here, but you have a blend of colors and I think that it's gonna be pretty much, you know, disappearing. Unless you really look for it, you really will have a hard time seeing it. There are, there are some, you know, mature trees on the west side of the dome, which are proposed to remain and they provide a nice screening. There's also quite a bit of vegetation along Annandale Road, along this edge, and that also provides very good screening. The only bare spot really of, from Annandale is this view, which is down at the bottom, you know, right here. And then, then once you turn, you don't, you don't see it again.
I live in Lawrence Farms East and isn't the club normally closed in the winter?
It's, obviously the golf course is closed.
Yeah.
But they're open for events.
Oh, they are?
And, and other functions. They also have a paddle tennis, which is very active and that's mostly winter activities. Would you like?
That is correct.
And with that, I'm, you have two questions.
What type of illumination will be added to the property?
There is only illumination for the path that goes to the dome structure and that is on the, on the plan, there's a new walkway proposed from roughly the southwest corner of the clubhouse and I'm coming, coming down this way and up to the middle of the dome. It's about 50-foot walkway, which would be the same material as the existing walkways, basically a flagstone. And there's little ballards that'll be along the road and there'll be just emergency light on each end for the, above the door. There's no other lighting or anything else.
And the hours of operation?
They are...
Till 10:00 P.M.?
Till 10:00 P.M., yeah, yeah, till 10:00 P.M.
So there's lighting inside the dome?
Inside the dome, there's lighting and there is a light, light strip in the middle of the dome, which is shown here along the central section. It's a basically clear translucent material that lets in daylight.
And much of the light from inside the dome will be seen outside the dome?
I would like...
So to give you the quick answer on that...
Can you use the microphone, please?
Sure. To give you the answer on that...
I'm sorry, if you could start by identifying yourself.
I'm Donato Frioli, we're the dome manufacturer. The dome is gonna be built with a military-grade blackout in all areas except the roof area, which will be about a 30-foot-wide translucent strip. It'll be located on the top portion of the roof from probably about 30 feet up, so it will not emit light like a flashlight, so unless you're in a plane looking down, you'll see no light. That's the extent of the light.
What, what purpose does that serve?
During the daytime, it's, you know, nice to have the, the natural light come in for the purpose of the players.
What's the dome made out of?
28-ounce vinyl coated polyester material.
And I assume it's being held up by air pressure?
All air pressure on the inside, all PE stamped to meet your local wind, snow loads, same way this building is.
And what about the noise effect of the air pump and the generator?
So, so the air, you know, this will have one main air handler on it. They're actually very similar to roof-mounted units. They actually are roof-mounted units that we just modified to run, you know, 365 days or in this case, 180 days. So the amount of noise you'll hear will be similar to what the club already emits with their roof-mounted units. So you won't feel any significant impact, especially considering this is in the middle of 27 acres.
And I assume the generator is only, is for power failure so the dome doesn't collapse?
Yes, exactly. That's there to back up in case.
You're not gonna run that?
No, not at all.
So you'll meet the noise requirements of the town? The decibel maximums?
Yeah. And we can get that information to you guys.
Decibel maximums?
Yes, and we can get that information.
If there are not any, anticipated to be any changes in the membership as a result of this, what, what is the motivation for the application?
Motivation in general is, you know, more viability of the club, more increased membership, staying competitive with the landscape and providing more value for the community.
Excuse me, can you identify a name on the...
Sure, I'm sorry. I'm Mike Corcione, I'm with Mount Kisco Country Club, one of the members and board member and long-range planning chairman.
The height of the bubble, is it standard to be 39 feet? Is there, is it different for every different bubble? What, how, how did you arrive at this?
The size of the footprint, to some degree dictates the height and also is the trajectory of a tennis ball. So in order for it to be a viable and comfortable playing surface, that's kind of what the, what the height needs to be.
So it couldn't be 38 feet or 37 and a half feet or...
I, I suppose it could.
Would it impact the play?
It would be best...
I'm sorry, sir.
I'm Donato Frioli, Sr., founder of Asadi, the company supplying the dome. Generally speaking, there are standards for air-supported structures where the width is between 30 and 35% of the width, not only for meeting the trajectory of a tennis ball when it's played, there is no interference with the wall or the ceiling with the trajectory. Second most important part is that it sheds snow and if it were too flat, you'd have a flat roof containing the snow load. It could cause you an issue. This way it slides off. The most important thing, and I've been doing it 57 years now, the dome generally, and I have tennis structures across the entire United States, in fact, I'm the founder and builder of the very first tennis court ever covered with a dome in 1962. The, the angle you look, when you're looking at the structure at the same level it's mounted, the trajectory of the eye hits it about halfway, called the mean height of a dome. The mean height generally is accepted as the true height of a dome because if you were not doing a round dome, even though the base of the structure is mounted to a foundation that's square, the moment you inflate it from all points, it starts to curve upward and takes a round dome shape. So because of a round dome shape, generally even by mathematical reasons, or even permanent domes, the dome height is considered to be the mean height. The mean height of this dome is only 18 feet or 19 feet. At 19 feet, generally speaking, that's why we have never had really any turn downs or rejections of approvals because we are dealing with the mean height instead of the one point in the center of a ball where it turns 39. So you have very little obstruction. Furthermore, the dome is mounted on a platform higher than all of the terrain around the perimeter. So actually, when you look up at the dome, you're not even seeing at the point of hitting the dome at 19 feet, your tangent point is even lower. So that's why you won't recognize or see this structure, especially on this property, other than the side where you walk out the door of a clubhouse and head-on face it and you will see the dome from that side. All the other three sides is practically disappears from the side of eye.
So is there a map or has there been a... So is there a map or has there been an assessment made as to which neighbors will be most impacted by the dome visually?
The neighbors that will be most impacted, um, are located across the valley on the other side of the creek. There are two neighbors along Annandale. Uh, the upper one is roughly at the same elevation as the dome. The, the second one is down lower, and so they still look up, uh, towards the dome. Uh, the distance between their house and the dome is about seven hundred feet, the closer one. So at seven hundred feet, they're looking slightly up through the trees. And, uh, like Mr. Frauley is saying, the, the, the tangent of the, of the line of the eyesight hits the dome. Um, I don't know exactly the angle, but even if it was twenty-five feet, that's all you do because the, the curve of the dome basically turns away from you and disappears from you.
So you've just told me about one side, right?
Yes.
What about other sides?
There, there are no other visible sides, um, visible angles from which you can see the dome. Uh, from the south side, there is, um, an existing structure and, um, a lot of vegetation. The, the road is down low again, so it's actually behind a knoll. And then you cannot even see towards the, uh, towards the site. It's all behind, behind the hill. On, on the west side, this is heavily vegetated and there's, there's no penetration of a view towards the dome. And, uh, similarly, um, along the, um, the main road from Mount Kisco to, to Chepequa, uh, the, the road goes down and over the brook and, and angles back up. And there's no, a- a- and again, there's heavy vegetation along the slope that basically, uh, goes along, uh, the, uh, the slope of the hill, which is roughly here, and this, this is all heavily vegetated.
So just in summary, how many neighbors do you think will be impacted visually?
I think two.
Two.
Ken, I just wanna say that this, this area of the tennis courts here is really quite obscured. It's, it's, it's not, it's an area that it's difficult to see into. And I think that even with thirty-nine feet, I think, the green, I think it wouldn't, um, create a, a visual mass that it looks, you know, on paper that it looks to be.
Have you heard from the town planner and town engineer?
Yes, we have gotten the comments from the town planner and town engineer. Uh, we have prepared the SWIP. Uh, we haven't submitted it yet because we wanted to wait after this meeting tonight to answer any additional questions that might be. Uh, so we have the Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan ready. There's some additional, uh, investigation to do, such as soil tests to actually, uh, complete the design of the storm water management system. And we have gotten comments from, uh, the town planner. We have also addressed those, and we would like to submit them, uh, shortly after this meeting.
And the development coverage variance that you're asking for, could you explain that in more detail?
Yeah, what we use in the calculation of the, of the coverage is one-acre zoning, uh, which is what this property technically is in. Um, but by the virtue of, uh, having special use permit, I'm not sure how it applies. So, uh, the calculation for the twenty-seven acre lawn, the, the current coverage is thirty-six thousand fifty-eight square feet, which is, um, thirty percent, that is the building coverage. The, um, proposed coverage would be, um... Let's see. Well, um, it, it would be the, basically the difference, which is the one-twenty by one-twenty, uh, footprint of the, of the building. The total development coverage, uh, currently is sixteen percent roughly, a hundred ninety-one thousand square feet. And the proposed coverage with the dome would be twenty, two thousand, two hundred one thousand square feet roughly, seventeen, seventeen percent.
Where is the additional coverage coming from?
It's, um, I guess in a...
What accounts for it?
What accounts for it? That's a good question. Uh, there are existing courts.
No one's ever given me credit for a good question.
Uh, well, um, the courts are there.
Right.
Right? So, um, if we count them into existing coverage.
Right.
Uh, the only difference then would be the strip of land between the two courts, which is roughly ten feet wide and a hundred and twenty feet long. And then the grate beam that goes around the building, which would be basically permanent structures. And then so that's what's got, what gets covered in addition to what's there today.
Is that right?
Well, how about the fire truck access?
Existing is what they're showing now, the two-twenty-eight. They would be increasing it by the, the twelve-hundred plus the grate beam.
He says existing is one-ninety-one?
Maybe doing a grate beam about four-hundred-and-eighty linear feet.
The two-twenty-eight exists now, then?
Yes, it does.
Oh, then it's no change.
Very.
Even if you give the new twenty-foot access road for the...
They would increase with the access road, and they would increase with the grate beam, which is about four-hundred-and-eighty feet, linear feet maybe times two.
It's actually eighteen inches wide, right?
It'll, it'll actually sit inside of the existing courts. So your existing courts are one-twenty by one-twenty, outside a fence, outside a fence.
So it's nothing, actually, for the grate beam, not, it's not, not new development?
Access road is what's giving you...
Correct, yes.
And you said that's twelve-hundred square feet?
Uh, the access road is about, um, let's say a hundred feet, and we have to widen it because it's currently narrow. Uh, so, um, it would be maybe three hundred square feet additional.
So in essence, you're adding twelve-hundred square feet for the area between the courts?
Right.
Plus three hundred?
Yes.
So it'd be a, a net of fifteen hundred additional?
Correct.
Maybe more. You have the, um, the concrete pads that your generator's gonna sit on and then the other pads that you're developing are gonna be outside the dome.
Of the footprint, yes.
Correct. That all counts towards your coverage.
So we need to revise that and submit those calculations?
Does the temporary, does the temporary, uh, fact that it's a temporary structure for only use a few months a year, uh, the...
Well, the, the structures that are built as part of this, which are the housing pads, uh, and the access road for the fire truck, they will be there permanently.
That's the only increase in development coverage?
Correct.
From what exists today? But that's not what the, the application says, so that needs to be amended?
Correct, yeah.
Sabrina, was there anything else you wanted to bring to the attention of the board this evening?
Yes, if I may, I, I think it's important to note that in two thousand nine, your board took all of the previous requests of the Mount Kisco Country Club and put them into a special permit, whereas before they were a, a pre-existing non-conforming use. As a special permit, there is no, uh, directive under this use in our code for development coverage. So the development coverage would need to be accommodated based on all of the lots that are existing in our town that hold the special permit title, if you will, or, or fall under that special permit condition. So right now, you're only focusing on the one lot, the twenty-seven acres. You need to include the other lots that are in the town of Newcastle and provide the board with a, a summary of all of the development coverage from your, your pathways and whatnot, so that they have a, a specific number that they are going to consider. The, the, using the one-acre coverage number doesn't really apply here because you are a different use allowed within the one-acre zone. So the intention of this board is to create a benchmark of what is there today versus what you are adding. So it's very clear, based on the conversation tonight, of how much additional coverage you are adding. But we need to understand the total coverage that is on the site right now, and that's really important. There's a basketball court that you didn't account for, and there's other, other little things here and there that you need to accommodate and account for in your coverage, so the board has a clear understanding of where you sit today. As far as the, the visual analysis, um, you, you know, I, I think that your point of view, think it only affects two property owners is well, is understood and, and hopefully correct. But I think your job is due diligence, is to show from the roadways, from the houses along Annandale Drive, from those neighborhoods, taking pictures onto your site. Now, you talk about valleys, you talk about view sheds. You need to, to demonstrate through photography and pointed maps with referencing, reference points for each picture that this really isn't going to be an impact except for two properties. And I think that due diligence will also give comfort to the board in understanding whether or not there is a visual impact from your, your bubble. Another thing I wanted to, to get clarification on, you specifically stated that you're not increasing your membership, but you want more use of your facility? Is that what you're going after with this? Or are you increasing membership during your winter months? Maybe you can talk a little bit about that because it was a little bit confusing when you talked about the, the purpose for the bubble and the use factor.
Sure, i- in general, like with club trends, we're looking to add services that our members will use more. Um, we do have a paddle court facility that already operates in the wintertime. From an increasing membership, there is always a churn rate in clubs, and we're looking to keep up with that rate. And from a standpoint of membership, as most clubs, we are below levels we have been in past years. So it's really not necessarily an increase, but to maintain membership that we've been at to keep our operating budget sustainable.
Do you have a maximum membership level?
Yeah, we do have a maximum membership number across all our categories. Um, we are well below those numbers today. Uh, maximum, Tanya, is probably in the high numbers of about three-eighty across all categories.
How is that determined?
Uh, it's determined, determined by bylaws and membership category is usage of services. So a full member would have access to golf, tennis, other facilities across the board, whereas maybe a social member would only have access to the clubhouse.
So there's no, no, not to be any change in your bylaws regarding membership numbers?
Correct. No changes in our bylaws to membership numbers.
So that membership information and, and kind of, uh, documentation that you're not looking to, to exceed existing membership levels, that you're looking to provide more services for existing members, you know, along with a comparison, today, your hours of operation are X. You talk about having the paddle courts in the winter that are being used. Is your club open till ten o'clock? Or is this a change because you're now gonna have covered tennis courts? So that, all of that information submitted as part of your application helps inform the board as to what they're looking at in regards to your special permit. The other thing I wanted to bring to the attention to the board is I've asked the applicant to submit a full environmental assessment form. I provided you with a notice of intent under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, um, and would ask that you, um, declare yourselves lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act with a distribution of that notice contingent upon the applicant submitting the full environmental assessment form. They submitted a short environmental assessment form with their application, but in, in order to really, um, do due diligence in relation to notification to interested and involved agencies, we'd like to see a full environmental assessment form submitted as the applicant is working to address all the other comments and concerns of the town staff.
Thank you. And one point on the, on one point on the secret, I think that, and if, if, um, the town planner agrees that the issue relating to development coverage should be, um, straightened out too before we can distribute no, um, notice of lead agency because that, that's, the variance, um, is an important part of this application. We wanna know the extent of that variance and, and provide that to all the other involved and interested agencies. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this application? Please come forward.
I just wrote a statement, so if it's okay, I'd like to just read it so I make sure I cover everything. And then there are a couple of things that I wanted to respond to that, um, as I was listening in the audience. Good evening. My name is Christine Lecci. I live at five forty-seven Bedford Road with my husband Joe, who's with me, and my two daughters, both of whom graduated from Greeley. We have been living here for fifteen years, over fifteen years. Um, our house is sort of one of, maybe the two, I guess, that is affected by this. And we live along the fairway in, behind, I guess, what would be considered the rough. I'm not really a golfer, but, um, um, and it's sort of across from the parking lot. We get this great view in the winter of all the kids, um, I guess, trespassing as they slide down the hill. And it's a wonderful spot, um, to live in, um. However, this application has a lot more impact on our house and on our lives, really, and on our view than is, is what's been, you know, suggested. In fact, I, I don't even think that, um, the architect even acknowledged the existence of our house, but it, it's there, okay? I, I promise you, it's there. So, um, although the reason for this impact may not be clear today because we live behind a huge assortment of different trees that from our deck, um, block off the fairway and block off the country club. But I guarantee you and I promise you that in the fall, when these leaves fall and in the winter months, and I guess through April, which is six months, which I didn't realize was considered temporary, um, that it will have an impact and we will see this bubble. Um, and it will impair our really lovely view that we have after the leaves fall and we're able to really see out there. So the truth is, the summer months, um, I think many of the houses on Taylor Road, Kitchell Road, Annandale, and in that area are not really capturing the full impact of what this is gonna have when the trees fall, I mean, when the leaves fall. Um, we always know the country club is there because we do receive quite a few golf balls from the hook shots over at the driving range that they put up several years ago. And on the Fourth of July, we are very lucky because we do get a very clear view of the fireworks, which are set off every year by the club, um, many times, um, with the, um, excess and the ashes and other things falling on our property. Um, we hear the wonderful music from your singers during the Fourth of July party, the Labor Day party, the Memorial Day party, and sometimes some of your, um, weddings and events. I've actually gone to a few of the events, but, um, we never complained. And we love the fireworks, and we even like the music. Um, we really have tried to be accepting neighbors because the country club is such a benefit to the town of Newcastle. Um, why complain now about what seemingly is an innocuous application for a tennis dome that against the laws of physics, I guess, disappears? I, I'm not quite sure how, how that would work, but it is a disappearing tennis dome, allegedly. Um, first, having looked at the plans, I noticed that none of the photos that were submitted showing the dome from the perspective of our home. None of the, uh, photos were showing the dome from the perspective of the top of Taylor Road. None of them were showing the perspective of the area around the tennis courts along that little, um, stream. I know there is trees there now, but like I said, those trees are not gonna be much of a blockage when the leaves fall. And I know this because I'm a regular walker of the hill of Taylor Road. And I know this because I'm a regular walker of the hill of Taylor Road. I go there for my exercise, I go there with my dog. So where we live, we're very fortunate to have a lovely view in the winter months. We do have, in fact, I've heard mentioned the paddle courts, which, I mean, compared to a dome, have a point one percent impact. In fact, the paddle courts, I think, are just a lovely feature of your club. And I'm always amazed at these people who go out in the winter with their coats on and play that. And so really, you can't really compare. I agree that we need more photos from different perspectives, particularly from the top of Taylor Road. However, we need those photos to be doctored up so that we can see what we're going to be looking at in the winter when there are no leaves on the trees. I have other issues with the plan and the construction of a dome. Half of the year is going to be up, and I have a hard time understanding why that is considered a temporary seasonal tennis court. I would not call six months of a year a temporary seasonal facility. The dome is going to run from six AM to ten AM with full LED lighting. There's going to be a pathway to light it up. How will this affect the rest of the neighborhood when the trees are without leaves? The application also states that the dome will be sufficient to house ninety people. They're going to sponsor tennis tournaments. The impact of this to the neighborhood and our home is particularly very significant. In addition to the lighting inside, there's going to be lighting outside. It's not going to be used by club members only, it's going to be used by guests and outside tennis players. If there are going to be tournaments, perhaps there's going to be food and drinks served. Or will the country club invite the tournament players and spectators into the club facilities? Is that going to happen at ten o'clock when the tournaments end? Is it going to happen later? We don't know any of those things. There was a letter in the file that was submitted to the court, which I was able to locate online because the town hall was closed today, from the architect, saying that there's going to be a viewing area of twelve hundred square feet to accommodate eighty people. I don't understand who those eighty people are, when they're going to be there, and if this is going to be during a tournament, and how loud will that be? There is nothing indicating any viewscape that's going to soften the effect of this. Are there going to be evergreens planted to hide the facility, particularly from my point of view? Can evergreens be planted if this facility is only there for half a year? The ventilation system has really been downplayed a bit. However, if you're noticing every so often when these air handlers turn off, everything gets very, very quiet and you can actually, your ears can feel the difference. Air handlers make a lot of noise, and you're walking at night with a dog or you're in the area, you're going to hear these. I found also that under section sixty-four thirty B one of the code, I'm probably completely wrong on this, but an application for a special use permit must also show that the application, the proposed use will serve a community need or convenience. I don't see any of that here. It also has said in the code that it should be not approved if there's noises, fumes, vibrations, or other characteristics that would be the operation of every permitted use not requiring a special permit. I'm asking for more consideration of this application and to perhaps, you know, review the additional information that's going to be submitted by the application, the applicant. I also noticed in the environmental assessment form that they supplied, which was the short form, that the proposed facility will create storm water discharge and will require a new storm water treatment system to be installed for the project. Now, we have watched many, many storm water projects that were conducted over the years on the fairway because there's an awful lot of water that impacts the fairway. According to the application, they are going to install permanent air pumps, a heater, a generator, other equipment, is this going to be hidden with landscaping? Is this going to be out in the open? How loud is it going to be? Where is the dome going to be stored? It's going to be stored on site, but where is it going to be visible also? I'm respectfully requesting or asking the board to really truly consider this and consider the impact to the neighborhood and particularly to the one or two people who are going to be impacted, I suppose. If I may, I have some pictures. And these pictures are from the fall and the winter, and they're taken because I love to take pictures and I love to take pictures from my front entrance because I get up early enough to sometimes see the sun rise. If you look at these pictures, you can actually see very clearly the clubhouse and where the dome will be. It's not something that we're not going to see. It's definitely something that we're going to see. And I recently replaced a fence in my yard. The fence, Sound Fence Company told me, because I asked him, I said, what about green? And I was basically told, well, green really stands out in nature because nothing in nature is that color green. You're actually better off with a black fence. So I just threw that out there. Is it okay if I give you these pictures?
Give it to our secretary there.
So that's it, that's what I'm saying, and thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, what did you say your address was?
Five forty-seven Bedford Road, so we're across from Petersville.
Thank you. Did the applicant, I know there was a lot that the neighbor just spoke about. Did you want to make any comments about any of those items now in this evening?
I'll be brief. First of all, thank you for the comments. I think it's always very important to hear what the neighbors and everybody has to, you know, has on their mind and in their concerns. We certainly are going to address those questions and concerns. I would suggest that as the town planner, we'll take more pictures from all the way around to identify any view sheds or viewpoints that are particularly sensitive. We have received a request for the environmental assessment form, which we have prepared, but like I said before, we haven't submitted them before the meeting so that actually we can make it a formal submission. So there is a lot of material that still needs to, again, to the board for to complete the submission and the review by everybody. And I think after that material is submitted, they'll perhaps clarify some of these concerns.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? So I'm sorry, just, I'm sorry, please introduce yourself.
Hi, good evening, my name is Joseph Lecci, I'm a resident of five four seven Bedford Road.
So if I could just ask if you would limit your comments to those subjects or that your wife didn't already cover, please, thank you.
My lovely wife Christine said it very well, so I'll continue from there. I think obviously, ladies and gentlemen, I've never sat in my living room before and looked out my front window, but there's no way this tennis center is not going to be a big impact to the neighborhood. It's going to be a major impact. I'm an avid tennis player. I play in tennis bubbles all over Westchester, Connecticut, New Jersey. I've never seen a tennis bubble installed in a residential neighborhood as such. I play in New Rochelle, that's on Palmer Avenue by Toyota City and everything else down there. Club Fit over in Briar Cliff is on North State Road, very residential. Sawmill River Club, which is down in Mount Kisco, very, I mean, sorry, very commercial neighborhood, along with the Sawmill Club. Club Fit up on Route Six, it's also a very commercial neighborhood. I don't go traveling around town into these ritzy multimillion dollar neighborhoods into tennis bubbles to play tennis every week, and I play on a regular basis three times a week. I don't understand how a tennis facility of this nature could fall in the laps of a beautiful residential town in Chappaqua, this town. We're living in a residential neighborhood. If you look in the code from IBC code, chapter three, a tennis court is actually listed as an assembly. So now how does an assembly place, which is an A four and A three occupancy, how does an assembly place occur inside a residential neighborhood within Chappaqua? Maybe there's been some past history and some variances and permits provided, but why would we allow that to happen again moving forward? We all moved to this town to live in a very rural town, nice serene setting. If you look off my back porch, it's beautiful. This is nothing going to be, this is going to be nothing but an atrocity. It's going to be ugly. I think Christine is a hundred percent right when she talks about the green color. If you look out in the wintertime, the only thing you see that's green is pretty much nothing. It's going to be white, it's going to be brown, it's going to be everything else. So the selection of color right there, right off the bat, doesn't even make sense. In my opinion, I think white would actually fall into backdrop a lot more than green. However, I don't even want to see this at all, so I don't want to see any colors out there at this point. Now, you're asking to build a structure that's four feet above limitations within the town of Chappaqua. Why would we allow that, especially in a residential neighborhood? Especially when it's an A four occupancy that shouldn't be built in a residential zone? The HVAC noise, I completely disagree with the gentleman back here. I live on the side of that. I'm a licensed professional engineer, I'm an HVAC designer. I design these systems every single day of the week. There's no way you're going to add fans to a system in a property and say the noise is not going to increase. Now, with this system, with these bubbles, they need to be pressurized twenty-four seven. So that means their air conditioning units are going to be running and operating twenty-four seven, around the clock. So now they don't shut down at seven o'clock, they don't shut down at eight o'clock, they don't shut down at nine o'clock. At two o'clock in the morning, this unit's going to be running. It's going to turn on, and as Christine had mentioned previously, it's very quiet in the neighborhood. So anytime something shuts on or shuts off, and we get this from the kettle house, we get it from the country club, you hear this noise very distinctly. So now to add more noise into a fence into a property is just not right to the entire neighborhood. So there's a lot of issues with this. Now, noise is another issue that I have concerns with. One, you're adding noise from the fan units. A bubble that has eight players plus eighty-two spectators in there is not a quiet facility. That facility is going to be very noisy. There's absolutely zero acoustics in a tennis bubble. So how are they going to obtain acoustical, how are they going to maintain the acoustics without disrupting the neighbors with that? Traffic in the area is going to increase. They're not going to build a tennis bubble and just have local members come in. They're going to start having USTA events night after night, week after week, and there's going to be outings in there, so it's going to drive more traffic within the neighborhood. If you look on Taylor Road right now, it's a very tight road, very small, so any more traffic in that neighborhood shouldn't really be acceptable. From that standpoint, lighting is another issue. There's no way that that bubble's not going to emit additional lights and additional walkway lighting is not going to be. If you look out into that backdrop at night, it is just pitch black except for a light or two over at the country club. Other than that, I think that's about all I have to say. From my standpoint, I just don't think this fits into a residential neighborhood. I don't think it's right that two families and two houses and two domains in the town of Chappaqua should have to be impacted to this extent so people can go out and play tennis. There's the Chestnut Ridge Club around the corner, there's the Sawmill Club around the corner, and there's a Club Fit Club around the corner. So I don't understand why they can't pick up and go play over there at that time.
Just on the point of visual impacts, is there anything in your estimation that could be done to mitigate the visual impact with plantings or anything of that sort? Of course, I'm not familiar with your home.
I think if I address that from my viewpoint, it's going to be very little because we actually look down into the valley from our property. So you could talk about the tangents and the lines and the topographicals and all that, but we physically look down into their property at that time. So we're going to get a very clear cut view from there. I think me knowing the neighborhood and the other areas, it may not be as much of an impact to some of the adjacent properties at that time. And I do think that our property will have the biggest visual impact in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard?
May I add?
Yes, quickly, please.
Just on the note of perhaps what could happen. If it's a few players coming to play at night, that could be the start of it. But like I said, there is, according to the application, there's room for ninety people and there's room for eighty spectators, and there's talk about tournaments and...
I just, I'm sorry, anticipating where you're headed with this. I just want you to understand that this special use permit will define parameters and the applicant will not be able to exceed those parameters. So again, we're not there yet, but...
And I just also wanted to add, I, we do look down, but I would, you know, if the board were to approve this as one of the conditions, you know, trees that are evergreen, you know, that are there year round, you know, would certainly mitigate the visuals from us.
Okay, thank you. Where do we go from here?
The next step would be for the notice of lead agency. If the board wants to adopt a motion to, with the intent to declare themselves lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and then distribution of the notice of intent would be subject to the information regarding the development coverage and the submission of the full EAF to the acceptance of the town planner. So we wouldn't send that out until we got that additional information. Then the board, you know, would have to obviously wait thirty days before it could take action with respect to the SECRE. Before it could take any action with respect to SECRE. This, because it's a special use permit amendment, would also have to be referred to the planning board. I'll defer to the town planner again, but you know, there's a substantial amount of information that still has to be submitted, so I don't believe it would be appropriate to do that now, but...
Yeah, I agree with counsel.
Okay.
It should not be referred at this point.
Should we designate ourselves?
Sure. So I'll make a motion that the Newcastle Zoning Board of Appeals be declared the lead agency in this action pending a full environmental assessment form from the applicant and a further delineation of the development coverage elements.
A second.
Is that sufficient, your estimation?
Yes, probably an amended application setting forth the appropriate development coverage requirements and variances.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Nice to see you all.
Hi, Mary Scott, this is Frank Ganga, the homeowner.
Did I correct my pronunciation?
It's actually pronounced Jang, like J-A-M-G would be.
Oh, really?
It's all right.
We're all learning tonight.
You should have it phonetically on our list.
So we're here tonight, actually, just for three variances. Two are for a small overhang that we want to put over garage doors, and one is for a second floor addition over an existing first floor. The house in question has a first floor bedroom, the other three bedrooms are upstairs. We are looking to take that first floor bedroom, move it upstairs, and turn the existing into a family room. Also visually, there's a kind of blank space over the garage, so we wanted to make it a little more attractive. So that garage overhang requires a front yard setback of variance of two feet, a reduction from sixty feet to fifty-eight feet, and a side yard variance of fourteen feet, reduction from thirty-five feet to twenty-one. One thing I want to point out, the shape of the property is very unusual. It's a very long, narrow property. It's also legal nonconforming in that it's just over a half acre and one acre zoning. So there are setback issues everywhere. In the rear, we're putting the second floor addition, and I'll hand this to you guys. It's going over an existing dining area, which it's actually... which is actually further back from the, the closest piece. There's a sunroom, which is 10 feet back from the side yard. Where we're going over, we're actually 23 feet. So the variance we require there is, um, 12 feet? 12 feet side yard variance. So that's the third, the third one. Um, I'll just...
See, that changes the footprint of the house, you're just helping it up.
Correct. So, um, we don't feel it's having any environmental impact on the neighborhood. It's been designed in architectural keeping with the house details, and most of it is in the back.
What, what, the garage overhang? Visual?
Visual, totally visual. It doesn't touch the ground, it's on brackets.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we do. You know, we try and make things look better.
Exactly.
We'll need a snow rake.
Okay.
Sir, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No. I move that we close public hearing.
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
Okay.
I move that we grant, um, the requested variances to, uh, I'm sorry, the last name?
Jang.
Jang?
Yep.
Jang, um, three variances, a front yard and a side yard. A front yard, two foot, and a side yard, 14 feet, for an overhang above the garage. And a side yard, 12-foot variance for the construction of, um, a bedroom above the existing patio.
Above the existing dining room.
Sorry, above the existing dining room. Uh, for the following reasons, the granting of the variance would create no undesirable change or character in the neighborhood. Uh, there's no feasible method other than the variance to achieve the benefit for this property. Uh, I don't believe the variances are substantial. Um, variance, as granted, would have no adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition in the neighborhood. Um, this is self-created, however, I think it's de minimis. And for those reasons, I move that we grant the variance. Six months to start, one year to finish.
Second.
Any, any documentation? No. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, happy variance.
Thank you.
Mary? I'm gonna let you give this to our secretary. Thank you. You agree? Kugan?
Kugan? Okay, next.
Barrett?
Hello, I'm Tom Barrett, um, the owner of 22 Hollow Ridge Road, Bedford Corners. I'm here today to seek a variance for a side yard setback for exterior fireplace on a pool permit that was issued in 2015. And, um, I think the, um, we were before this board in 2017. Figure out at my house, we, because of the front yard situation, the pool being in the front yard, um, came out and granted a variance at that time before that, that pool. Um, at the time, when, when it was reviewed in 2017, and I think as part of the package I submitted, Sabrina's letter states that the fireplace was in place in 2017, at the time we were in front of this board again. And I think it was an oversight that current building inspector, Tom Cott, as part of his final inspection, I had gone through final inspections for Mr. Seoli and Steve for landscape, and it took us a couple of years, but we got there. Um, so now, I think this is the last thing for an as-built permit for that fireplace and a, uh, set of steps, part of the landscape that Tom's looking for. And he denied the, the permit, the as-built permit based on the setback.
So I'm sorry, help me understand. So the, you submitted plans to, um, install this?
Pool.
And as part of that, this out, this exterior, um, fireplace?
Yes, so there were a number of issues in 2015 when we submitted. Originally, we had, in 2008, we built the house, we had permission for a pool.
Right.
Never built it. Came back in, 2015, got the approval. Um, Sabrina noticed that, okay, this is really your front yard. Came back in, got the, the variance for that, um, along with some other things that are stated in her letter.
Right.
Um, and we went ahead and built it, completed the work. At the time of the inspection, uh, for sign-off, they noticed that, you know, you've got a fireplace here. Mea culpa, I did it, it wasn't permitted, we came back in, we did all that was necessary.
So that wasn't part of the submission as far as the building department was concerned initially?
Well, it was there. So in other words, in 2016, yeah, it was all there. It was just that Tom picked it up, along with some other things that his predecessor didn't.
Right.
So there was a hand railing, a gate was swinging the wrong way.
Okay.
Things like that, and he picked up the fact that this is, even though it's in line with an existing retaining wall, it is an encroachment on the 45-foot setback by 13 feet.
Okay.
So I, I'm not totally clear. The fireplace was there before the pool was built?
No, 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 it was part of the pool.
Part of the pool construction?
Yeah, exactly. It wasn't permitted in 2015, but was in 2017, as Sabrina's letter states.
So I, I remember the, the application, but not the details, of course.
Okay.
But we, when we did grant for the pool, was the fireplace part of that application?
It was there, it was there, along with the retaining wall and then a set of steps. So Bob got through his issues, uh, on town engineer's side with the wall, um, and what was left was building inspection, which kind of tripped me up. In other words, I would have been running a parallel path with building inspection along with...
So the permit, the permit for the pool, it did, it did or did not include the fireplace?
It did include it.
Oh, I'm confused.
We have no record of the fireplace, but it was originally...
You have no record?
Yeah, that's what brought us here today.
Okay. So what do we, what does he need to do? An amended building permit for the pool or a whole new permit for the fireplace?
We need to legalize the fireplace.
Just legalize it.
That's why we're here.
Yeah, okay.
And the development coverage is what? That's, uh, part of the fairback, you know, the original approval?
It was all approved back in 2017 and calculated in that coverage, but the location of the fireplace was never included. It was just about pure location.
So it doesn't matter, the coverage is the coverage, we, which we took care of it.
You included that.
Previously to this.
Previously.
So it's only the location of the fireplace, doesn't sound like a big deal to me. Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No. Anything else? No, all good. I move that we close the public hearing.
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move that we grant, um, a variance to Thomas J. Endeavor P. Barrett of 22 Hollow Ridge Road in Bedford Corners. Um, it is a 13-foot side yard, is that side yard, Tom? 30-foot side yard variance?
Yeah, sorry.
Side?
Yes.
13-foot side yard variance for the following reasons. Um, the benefits sought by the applicant will cannot be achieved. Uh, it's, it's in already. Um, the granting of the variance will not cause any desirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. Um, requested variance, area variance, may be considered substantial, but, um, it's a pre-existing condition in some ways, so it's obviously there. Um, not having adverse effect or impact on the physical environment conditions of the neighborhood. Is this seen by, is this visible from other neighbors or...?
No, the, 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 the side yard that it's up against is a vacant lot.
Okay. Um, I don't suppose it's a self-created hardship since it was on the previous variance, um, it seems to be a missed, uh, so therefore I move that we grant the variance.
And Tom, do we need any kind of a...
No, sir, we have already built it.
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, happy variance.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Burger?
Oh, yay! I thought I had a lot longer.
Making an assumption it's gonna be approved.
Oh, sorry, I just meant, oh, yay, yes.
People are waiting.
Do you ask me questions or I go?
You go first, and you tell us why you're here.
I am here, I live right next to the senior parking lot at Greeley. My name is Amy Berger. I live right next to the senior parking lot at Greeley, and there's an existing six-foot fence that needs to be replaced. But when I replace it, I'd like to replace it with an eight-foot fence because the Greeley's parking lot is about here. And then there's a slope, and the existing fence is put here. So the six-foot fence is really only giving me four feet of coverage. And on the slope, the property line is actually here. It's a rock wall, but to put the fence, you know, closer, further up would be challenging. Plus, there's already the posts further down here. So I'd like to go with the eight-foot fence, so I get six feet of coverage from the high school side.
Because there's a two, a two-foot, um, grade change?
Yes.
I see. Tom, do you just wanna recite for us the, uh, the code as it relates to fences and what the...
You're allowed up to six feet for your perimeter fence, and a variance is needed to go higher.
And that, how does that relate to depressions or, I don't know?
It goes by the existing grade. Now, she has a unique situation because they, her grade elevates sharply to the parking lot away from her property. So there, she's at a disadvantage right now because they're starting out in some places almost three feet higher. Site visits reveal that she cannot overcome that with a six-foot fence.
Right.
She does have a letter of affirmation from the school not objecting to having this.
How long will the fence be?
I think it's about 80 feet, could be 80.
Eight, zero?
Yeah, the fence already exists. I'm just replacing the fence that's falling down and putting up a taller fence.
So there's an 80-foot, six-foot fence right now?
Yeah.
And there's only one, one side of your property, correct? The back of your property?
I'm only putting a taller fence in that section of the property, yes. There's fencing all over the place, but I'm only doing that part.
And this fence is only visible to the adjacent neighbor, which is approved the application, so...
Correct, it's actually visible from, it's odd, you don't actually see the fence from my house. It's actually visible from the neighbor next door who really, really wants the taller fence because they're dealing with, um, lighting problems from the Greeley property. They put in turf field and they put in tall football lights, and they have a lot of noise problems. So they're, the person that's gonna see the fence is the one who's encouraging the fence.
Fortunately, no bubble yet.
So what, is this a stockade fence or a chain link?
Yeah, it's a stockade, stockade fence, yeah.
I understand you can't locate it on the higher portion of the, before the grade drops.
Well, I probably could, but it would be worse for the high school, right? Because then the fence is gonna get closer to the parking lot. Right now, the fence is setback on my property about 10 feet from one end and probably four feet from the other end. So if I put the fence on the property line, which would make it taller, I'm gonna get the fence closer to Greeley, which is, you know, gonna close them in a little bit. Right now, they've got a lot of breathing room on my property.
You're taking, you're taking away from your property.
Exactly, but that's the way the fence was put in already, and I'm perfectly happy just restoring it in that spot.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No. Any comments?
Nope.
Comments here? Uh, I move that we close public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I move that the Burger application for a fence variance where six feet is to code, uh, the applicant is requesting eight feet, be approved for the following reasons. Um, there are elevation issues as it relates to the school property as it, as in its relationship to the applicant's, um, property. Uh, there will be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Uh, the benefit cannot easily be sought, uh, be achieved through other means. Uh, the variance is not substantial. Uh, there will be no adverse impact on the physical environment, uh, and the alleged difficulty is not self-created. We will have six months to start, one year to complete. Um, do you need an as-built or anything, Tom?
No.
No. Um, these reasons, I think we should...
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, happy variance.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
CNN Building Corp.
Look happy.
My name is Mark Fritz, I'm the architect. Uh, I represent CNN Building Corp. Tonight, they couldn't be here. Um, essentially, we're here for a, uh, variance for proposed new residence with frontage on an unimproved mapped street. It's already gone before Architectural Review Board and approved. Um, the reason, I guess, we're here is to talk about the improvement to the street. Um, based on my conversation with the client, um, he's already had communication with the town engineer and Mr. DePaul, and they've discussed the project, they've gone to the property. Um, and what was discussed essentially was, uh, the idea would be to improve, um, the road coming in by adding a three-quarter inch compacted gravel, um, up to the driveway only. So, since the, the entrance to the driveway is on the westerly side, it would come up and they would terminate with the gravel at that point where it meets the driveway itself on the property. Um, by doing so, it's gonna, obviously, you know, by putting four to six inches of gravel down, it's gonna improve, um, and allow the water to drain better than it already does. Um, so it'll reduce erosion and runoff.
Are you gonna increase the width of the road?
Um, great question. Um, as far as I know, it's only based on what has been discussed. I wasn't told whether they were going to increase the width of the road or not. Certainly, if that's something that the board is suggesting, my client would be open to discussing it further.
So what you're intending to do to the road, is that going to be adequate for ingress and egress for emergency vehicles?
I believe that the road would have to be widened for that to occur. Um, I mean, I could be wrong, but, you know, this is something that was discussed with the town engineer. I don't know what their feelings are on widening it or whether it's, um, sufficient for bringing in ambulatory vehicles. If it's sufficient for, for the people who are gonna live there to, um, bring their cars into the property, I would imagine an ambulatory vehicle could get into the property as well.
Can you tell us where the closest fire hydrant is?
Um, I'm not aware of where that is, sir.
Tom, do you know where the closest fire hydrant is?
I do not have the information, no.
I believe it's, I did see something in one of the photos.
Is anyone else other than, I don't know, the, the building department, uh, reviewed this? Did you mention the town engineer?
Town engineer did.
But, but I, I don't, he hasn't written anything to us, right?
So where did you arrive at six inches of gravel? To make that a, a viable road? And you're going to go all the way from end to end or just a short section to the property?
Basically from park to the, um, to the entrance of the driveway.
Because that's, to me, that's not even a road, that's barely a goat path. It's really, really, really bad. And I don't think six inches of gra, I'm not an engineer.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see how six inches of gravel is going to help anybody.
I wasn't party to the conversation between the client and the engineer.
Okay, yeah, no, no, I understand, but I just want to get that out there, I, I think this is extremely.
I'm, I'm just the messenger tonight.
We're not going to kill the messenger.
Tom, it seems to me that something's missing here, right?
Something is missing.
Right.
The town engineer, Mr. Sealy, only did a cursory review of the project, he has not done a thorough review.
Okay.
The road, then, on the typical drive section shows a six-inch base course, then a two-inch additional course and then an inch and a half of top course. So we're going to have nine and a half inches of roadway base and top course.
So when, when they do that, supposing they do that, do, do they grade first before they start putting this stuff down or are they just trying to cover the sins that are there now? How would that work?
It all has to be, it all has to be graded, it's got to be pitched so that the water runs where it's designed to go to. It might be crowned so it's going both directions to the sides.
Mainly it's.
Well, you can crown it to the center or you can crown it to the sides, so. But that definitely needs to be, and there's elevations that have to be followed, all that still needs to be submitted.
So if they're going to do that, how much, how much greater of an effort would it be to make it an approved town road and be done with it?
An approved town road? It means you would have to go from park to the, to the other side that, and that's, could be a fifty or sixty-foot section in between.
Uh, I believe that other side is where the fire hydrant is located.
You're probably right, you know, I, I do, I don't know the exact distance to where it is, so.
You're correct, it is, it is on that side. I believe it's between the two properties that are there, forty-two and forty-one.
I, I think the board needs to do a site visit on this property.
Well, yeah, that could be true, but at a minimum, I think, um, it would appear to me that it was premature to review this application tonight, that I think we need the town engineer to evaluate, um, the proposal and, uh, tell us whether it's adequate or not and, what do you think?
I would urge that to be done, yes.
Okay. And you think emergency services should, you know, also be, um, have a, have a weigh-in with respect to that access? And is that something that the town engineer would pursue or? No, the applicant would. Oh, the applicant? The applicant would, would pursue obtaining, um, you know, an opinion from the, I guess, the fire chief or?
Fire chief.
Mm-hmm. And the town planner should probably review it as well. And, uh, from that standpoint, I don't know if Superintendent of Highways would have any, any interest in this application or not.
There might be a requirement for a road cut application.
Right.
That's another.
So there's a fair amount of, of work to be done.
I'm, I'm, I'm not in disagreement.
And, um, so, you know, we'll hold this over till the next meeting.
Okay.
And in that time, you'll have two, well, approximately two months in which to, uh, accomplish this so that we can hear it again come September.
All right, thank you, thank you for your time.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is anyone here to comment on it? I'm sorry, um, so, yes.
Yes. Yeah, I think you made the right decision in postponing this hearing. There's a lot to be done before there's any serious discussion like this. I'm David Reed, my, my mother's, Marcel Reed owns thirty-two Martha Place directly across from us. And in fact, the, the road you're talking about, unfortunately, there's no picture here, he has one, but, there's a park drive which is paved, the spring road is paved. Between that is three, is Martha, is, the, the part of Martha Place that is not paved, Martha Place past Park Lane is paved. Of the part, um, that is not paved is owned, as, as far as I know it, by my mother, uh, by, uh, the people living next door, the Crawl's and the Zhao's across the way. And I guess it would be partially owned by whoever were to live in that neighborhood is, it, the, um, whoever would live in fifteen. That is, I, I would not be particularly, I doubt my mother would want people to widen that road. Let me say, that road really is not passable, um, except by SUVs. It's one-way, it's a one-way road at best. It's, I, I don't even think the mailman tries to avoid going down it. To, to just put gravel on it, um, by itself, I don't think would be enough and I think it'd be difficult going, even with gravel, it would not be particularly good going. Widening the road would cut into our, uh, the, our property, um, and cut into the property of the people who live on the other side as well. And, um, but, obviously, that's something we particularly like, we have trees right there and I don't see how you could, if, if you go and you actually see this side, you will see that the road has actually been gouged down to, I don't want to say bedrock, but very large conglomerate of some very large granite. And, um, as far as gravel is concerned, um, we, we have tried gravel in our, our part of our driveway, which actually goes down to Martha Place, and the gravel washes away extremely quickly. You're talking about, you know, several thousands of dollars every other year at very least, um, maintaining a gravel driveway up to the, and I suppose just the lower part of the, the part of Martha Place. So, um, just by, just by that self, I think raises many questions. Some of the questions are about how the, any sort of driveway would actually go into that property as there is, um, this sort of very large conglomerate, all up and down, Martha Place, which is almost a foot, like almost gouged a foot down past what appears to be, uh, the sides of the, of the road. They would have to dig through all that. I don't know if, how that's practical and, uh, it remains to be seen, but I think, by very fact, I, I don't think the road can be widened. We certainly wouldn't give our permission to find it.
I think we need an explanation of the title to the road, um, so that we know.
The road is a paper road on the town was created in the original landscape.
So it's privately owned property?
It doesn't, no, it's a paper road, it's still registered.
And how, how wide is that paper road?
I think it's fourteen feet.
Don't have the measurements, but the properties have, you know, their surveys show, you know, they may be using part of the road and thinking it's their land right now. Surveys would show where the property lines were and how wide the road actually is. And it might be necessary to cut the road into the sides of the mountains to get the full width, which is being infringed on by the property usage from the surrounding neighbors.
Notice that there's also some protruding bedrock coming out of the road.
Well, my mother's house is on the ledge of that bedrock, you have to see the side. It's on the ledge of that bedrock, so, uh, that's the house is, is based on, I'm pretty sure.
Thank you for your comments this evening.
Mr. Krull also lives on that same road.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi.
I live at eight Martha Place, Al Krull, K-R-U-L-L. We've been there a long time. And in fact, before we did some improvements, old town supervisor Bruce Gilchrist, um, at my request, did a title search way back when. I believe Martha Place is a paper street twenty-five feet in width. You live in the area? Okay.
Don't hold it against him.
Hey, we're there. Don't hold it against us. From spring to park, it's paper and from spring to the Reed's property, it's about probably eighteen, twenty feet. Gravel road, stabilized gravel hard. Going down from, uh, the Reed's front to park, it's very jagged rock, et cetera. I can barely get through there with my Jeep. The town, though, does, it does not even take plows down there.
It's steep.
Kind of thing. And it's steep. I would urge you to take a site visit there. I'm kind of surprised, I, I did get a chance to look at the drawings this morning, okay? And the road section is actually a pavement road cross-section, but they're calling it out as a gravel section. We like that it's a private road, we like that it's an unapproved road. I don't understand, I'm assuming from what I saw, this is a spec house? I'm guessing, okay? Because you can't get to the front door from the road, you have to come up the driveway and walk around the house to get into it the way it's currently planned? I don't know if you have the site plans in front of you? What's that?
Modular.
Yeah, it's a modular, I don't hold that against anybody, that's fine, okay, I've done that myself. But I, I just think it's a force fit of something to make it work, to build the spec house to get a sale. And I just think the accessibility for, as you mentioned before, emergency vehicles, town vehicles, et cetera, is a problem. By the way, the fire hydrant is on the easterly side of this property, so it's right there.
Where is it?
It's on the easterly side of this proposed development, it's right across the street from us.
So it's up closer to the paid proportion of?
No, 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 it's actually further down between the Zhao's house, which is across from us, and this proposed residence. It's actually shown on Mike Campbell's survey, you know, the site plan that he has. But I would just urge you strongly to take a picture's worth a thousand words, you should get up and take a look at it. So it's, it's, we like the idea that it's private, that it's quiet, that people who have lived in town all their lives don't know it exists, but my concern is safety.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
I will try to be very brief. So my name is Fang Yuan, we live at the, um, Twenty William Street with my husband and two daughters. So this lot that they are going to put the house on is right in front of our yard. So my property is like, house is here and then the yard is side. So the new house will be ri, right facing our, uh, our yard. My, our biggest concern is, it's our, it's really the, the property, the lot is a slope and down towards our yard. And right now, it's heavily wooded, right? So that helps to preserve the habitats and also hold the, mitigate the flooding. If they put the house on, they have to remove the trees, they have to dig the basement. So we're really concerned there will be a cost, the water will wash down towards the downhill and also the driveway down east because we know the water problem today, even with all those trees. And without, there will be even more hazard there. And the narrow road is a concern and an area, it's, it's a beautiful neighborhood with all those deer, animals cross, and without all those trees, it's definitely changes the nature of the habitats.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else? No? So I propose that we hold this over to the September meeting.
Yes, there should be a motion to adjourn it to.
And, um, we get the input of the fire department, the town planner and any other.
Engineer.
Town engineer and, uh, anyone else who?
Emergency services.
Emergency services. All, um, interested parties. Give me a second, I'm in.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll see you later. Okay.
Thank you.
Morris?
Hi, good evening, uh, my name is Supreme Captain, I'm the architect representing Mrs. Heather Morris. We're looking for a developmental coverage, uh, variance for two hundred and fifteen square feet. The existing property, it's already a hundred and thirty-five square feet above the development coverage and we're looking to put a small addition to the house that includes bathroom and mudroom at the first floor. Currently, the residence does not have a restroom at the first floor and it's a matter of a practical matter, so.
So there's nothing that can be done to mitigate the, um, the amount of the variance?
Uh, we made it as small as possible and if you take a look at the plans, we're kind of limited by the existence of an existing stair going to the basement to, as you look from the back of the house to the right of it and to the left, we're limited by the window, existing window from the dining room, so you kind of squeezed it in between there as, made it as small as possible. It's, it's nothing, you know, it's basic.
Steps up or two foot, two feet, four foot? And the widest section, right?
I mean, the driveway accounts for almost half of the development coverage, right? What's the square footage of house that was existing?
Um, so the existing house. So the house maximum permitted building coverage.
It's eight hundred.
Eight hundred square feet, the main building.
Eight hundred square feet?
Yes. And then we have some two hundred and forty-seven in porches and forty-nine by, for the detached garage and there's a small fireplace in the back of the property. It's quite small.
Right.
So how, how will you enter the bathroom?
So the idea is to have a mudroom that connects the back of the property, um, and you get into the dining room and from that little mudroom you access the, the restroom. Quite tight as you can see in the plan. And by the way, we went through Architectural Review Board and we got approved.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application?
I'd like to speak.
Okay.
Evening.
Hi.
I'm Glenn Bacon, I, I'm the next door neighbor on the, I guess, the left side. Could I see the plans?
Sure, if you need.
They're right here. So this is the addition. Just this and the site plan. So this is what's happening, you are probably here, correct? You are, this gentleman, Mike.
Um, this gentleman.
So you're to the right of the?
I'm twenty-eight, right. So this is, this is, this is, here's the street, right?
So you're here, yes, so you're here, yes.
Okay.
So this is the addition, it is.
This is it, this, this bit here?
Yeah, that's it. Okay. So if you look, it's approximately seven feet deep by ten feet wide, there's a bathroom, you're here.
Yes.
Seven feet deep.
I was under the impression that it was the full width of the house.
No, 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 it's tiny.
Okay.
Just practical, that.
Got it.
Good?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thanks.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, application of, uh, Evan? Heather. Heather Morris, thirty-four, Ridgewood, Paris, for a, uh, additional, addition to the development coverage of approximately two hundred and fifty, two hundred and twenty feet of the maximum permitted development coverage for the following reasons. The property is proposed to be approved by a, uh, mudroom and bathroom, which are the first floors that do not currently have, um, you know, improve the, uh, livability in the house and, uh, is something that, um, most properties have a, some type of bathroom facility on the first floor, uh, on the ground floor, and this one is missing that. There have been no neighbors that have appeared, um, in opposition to the, uh, application. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties, nor the feasible method is available to the applicant. Location is well within all setbacks. The variance request is not substantial. The granting of the variance will not have any adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the property and this is not a self-created hardship. For those reasons, I move that we approve the application. Six months to start, a, a year to complete.
Yes.
Final survey.
Final survey on completion.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, guys.
Good evening.
Pen and?
Ten and?
Good evening, Kenneth Anand to Annandale Drive. Thanks for hanging in. I'm here to request a variance to place a generator on the rear side of my property adjacent to Annandale Drive. This is the survey. My house currently faces east, and there's a pond in front of it, making it impossible to place the generator in front of the house. And even with the culvert work that was recently done under Annandale Drive, the pond still overflows and raises the water quite a bit in front of the house. To the rear of the house, we have Bedford Road, and across the street, we have Chapel Quad Crossing. And although they've said they're going to regrade Bedford Road to pitch towards Chapel Quad Crossing, I get quite a bit of flooding in the rear of my property, which we're trying to do some drainage work to ameliorate. So as of right now, the best place to put this generator is off to the side, behind a fence that borders Annandale Road in my property, and about 14 feet of a variance is needed to place it there.
So why that particular, I heard everything you said about that.
Yes.
Why is close to the fence as, as you've placed it, why, why not closer to the house requiring less of a variance?
For concealment purposes mostly, and also to, you know, be as far from the house as possible. We can't, we can't have it much closer because we have yard where our kids play, so, and there's no, no adjacent residents on the Annandale side, no adjacent residents on the Bedford side. If we put it over here, it'll be right next to our neighbors, the Roses, so we're trying to spare them the, the noise nuisance.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No.
Looking for a 39-foot variance?
No, I think that was a typo, it's a 14-foot variance. It's currently 21 feet from the road, and I think the maximum permitted is 35, yes.
Excuse me. It is a, it is correct, it's written.
39 feet variance?
Yes. It's a front yard.
Yeah, I know that's the way it was written in the, from the code, but it's actually our rear yard, I don't know, I guess the way it.
It's still a front yard, you have multiple front yards.
I see.
I move that we close public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion at the application of Kenneth Anand for a 39-foot front yard variance for the installation of a generator. We approve the following reasons. The applicant has demonstrated that the location of the generator as proposed while requiring a large variance is the best place for it, because it will not impact his neighbor, there are no other neighbors near where he proposes the generator. Instead, it's just Annandale Drive and Bedford Road that will be affected by it. Granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. The requested variance, while substantial in this case, should not prevent us from granting this variance. There will be no adverse, no affect to the physical environment of the, in the application. While this is a self-created hardship, the benefit to the applicant will far outweigh any perceived detriment to the town or the neighborhood. You will need a final survey after your generator is installed to prove its location, and you'll have six months to start and one year to finish.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you, happy variance.
Thank you, John.
Good luck. Here for something?
Coogan, one more try. Are you a Coogan?
Coogan.
Where were you before?
Well, I came early and I saw a room full of people. I saw a lot of audio, of visual stuff, and I said, oh God, I gotta go and get my audio visual.
You're out on the town, we know you jump.
So I missed out, and I came back to an empty parking lot, and I knew I was in trouble. When Sabrina was here, I thought the format had changed. That was, that'd be interesting, what was going on. In the back.
Somebody left this thing. That was for the country.
Oh, that's why, everybody was here for the country tour.
Yeah. Puzzles bring a lot of people out.
Well, there was, there was a lot, but for sure, it wouldn't be a lot. We do this at the planning board all the time, I don't see my stick.
There you go.
Is it? I don't see it. I've had this problem before with this computer, but, and I've, I don't know, the ports. I'm doing it. That's it? No, that's this, that's click share. Looking out? Do it again?
You have variances, this house has. Six?
Oh my gosh, that's crazy.
He's all coming back?
Yay.
Well, I'm Charles Napoli, I'm, I'm Charles Napoli, I'm the architect for the Coogans. They live on McKesson, Hollacks, and Cedar. You can see that their property is surrounded by three roads. They are about a half an acre in the one-acre zone, subject to all the one-acre zoning requirements, including setbacks. We have a couple of front yards, I, I think we have three front yards, but technically we have one front yard, which would be Cedar Lane. And what you see in that dark, dark, dark section is an addition to an exist, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't realize he was.
That's okay.
We have an addition to an existing terrace that you see on the picture to the right, that's a terrace, it's about six feet, it's a more of a balcony, and we wanted to have that expanded to include a place to put a table and have dinner outside their dining room. We're showing a stairway down to the grade, and, and what's, what's unique about this particular location is that it's at the top of a rock pile. And I will try to get the other drawing out. This is the, this is what we're trying. What we're attempting to do is, if you see on the bottom left of the sketch, we're adding on top of the rock outcropping that is there, and then having a stairway down to another rock outcropping, and it'll end up, it'll end up where you see that rock from the road. Those stairs will go right to behind that rock. The deck extension will be in that little corner, coming further out, another seven or eight feet. And then they'll, they'll have their space for their table, and you can see the floor plan in the bottom right-hand corner. That little box on the bottom is the addition. But. You can see in the middle of the drawing, I'm going to try to put this here since I don't have a book or, if you see, if you see, see me moving this thing around there?
Yes.
That's a triangle. That's all the setbacks that this house requires. In the one-acre zone, even in the half-acre zone, the setback is right here from the main road. So every single part of this house is in a front yard or a side yard. We're trying very hard to put this addition as far away from the roads as possible, and it's, it's a porch extension with just a covered roof on it. We are looking for, I think it's a 14-foot variance in the, from the, on the, on the, on the Cedar Lane setback requirement.
Let the record show that there was no one to, who has appeared in opposition to the application. I move that we close public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion? I move that the Coogan application for an 18-foot front yard variance for the construction of a deck extension and stairs, we approve for the following reasons. This will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, the benefit cannot be sought through other means, the requested variance is not substantial, the proposed variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical environment, there are no neighbors who have appeared in opposition to the application, and the, though the alleged difficulty is self-created, you'll have six months to start, one year to complete, and final survey. Yes.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you, happy variance.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
How does Coogan impact the generators?
The generator, you see it right there in the picture, on the bottom right? The generator is already there, this addition is on.
So it's not going? About the minutes.
Oh. I move that the board approve the June 26, 2019 meeting minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, we're off.